Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Mount Lebanon Board of School Directors. Tonight is Monday, August 19th, 2024, 7:32 PM, and we're present in Room D205 of the Mount Lebanon High School. Public participation is also available via Zoom. Before we begin, can everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, a united one, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Ms. Wolf. Mrs. Crable?
Here.
Mrs. Burdick?
Here.
Ms. Fleischer?
Here.
Mrs. Gelman? Mrs. Genzel?
Here.
Ms. Guth?
Here.
Mr. Hoffman?
Here.
Ms. Johnson? Mr. Wyland?
Here.
Seven members are present. Excellent. I move that it be resolved that the Board approves the minutes of the discussion meeting held on June 10th, 2024, the Policy Committee meeting held on June 17th, and the regular meeting held on June 17th, 2024.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Thank you. All right. We are moving on to the Board Report section. The first is the Board President's Report, which is me. In June, the Board met with Dr. Fries to conduct the annual Superintendent Evaluation, which is based on performance related to a set of benchmark performance indicators across five standards, as well as on the annual performance indicators or the superintendent's goals. Dr. Fries's overall performance was rated as distinguished. Benchmark standards that were scored as distinguished included social and emotional well-being and governance and district operations. Benchmark standards scored as proficient included academic excellence, critical competencies, and inclusive welcoming, safe and secure schools. All benchmark standards were scored as either proficient or distinguished. Annual goals that were scored as distinguished included three out of the four goals. Goal one, analyze, make recommendations, and implement improvements for optimal use of district personnel. Goal three, analyze, make recommendations, and implement improvements for culture and environment for teaching and learning where student, where all students, staff, families, and community members feel safe, welcome, and included. And goal four, communicate professionally, positively, and transparently with key stakeholders, including community members, families, faculty, and board directors, clearly articulating district goals, priorities, initiatives, and programs. Annual goal two, analyze, make recommendations, and implement improvements to curriculum instruction and professional development, or CIPD, student services, and the Special Education Department, including special education, 504 plans, and gifted education, was scored as proficient. All annual goals were scored as proficient or distinguished. The Board thanks Dr. Fries for excelling in a challenging first year at Mount Lebanon and looks forward to continuing to work with her and on the Team of Ten in the Libo spirit of continuous improvement. Over the last two months, the Board has worked collaboratively with Dr. Fries to develop mutually agreed upon goals for the 24-25 school year, aligned with the district's current strategic plan. Goal areas include academic excellence, critical competencies, social and emotional well-being, inclusive welcoming, safe and secure schools, as well as district operations. Dr. Fries will present on the particular performance indicators under each goal area this evening, and they will be posted on the district's website. We will have monthly updates on goal progress at public meetings. As we do every month, I'd like to highlight a couple of items from the district's inclusivity calendar. On August 23rd is the International Day for Remembrance of the Slave Trade and its Abolition. This day is intended to inscribe the tragedy of the slave trade in the memory of all people. On August 26th is Women's Equality Day, which commemorates the adoption of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution in 1920, granting all American women the right to vote. A few district highlights. As you may know, since it feels like fall outside, tomorrow, August 20th, the district will welcome back students in grades one through 12, with kindergarteners beginning their Mount Lebanon journey on Thursday, August 22nd. Teachers and staff have been working diligently to prepare our buildings for students, and we are all very excited to welcome them back this week. Last week, the Libo Link Crew gave the lowdown on high school to our incoming ninth graders. I heard high praise from at least one of them. Students played games, talked about life at the high school with their Link leaders, and toured the school. This summer, Rising Junior Jerry Yu captured first place in Introduction to Parliamentary Procedure at the FBLA NLC. Congrats to fellow Rising Junior William Thomas for representing Mount Lebanon School District in financial math. And finally, thank you to the Washington Elementary Garden Club for working over the summer to tend to the school's garden. Last May, each second grader planted a zinnia seed, and fourth graders planted sunflower seeds. Rocks were painted by fifth graders and their kindergarten buddies. Just released was the first edition of Gnome News in the garden's mailbox, so be sure to check it out. And that concludes my report. Next up, we have the Superintendent's Report. I just want to note, I think we have on the agenda Dr. Fries's report and then a presentation on the Superintendent and District goals. They are one and the same, so take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome back. We are excited to start the 2024-2025 school year. In order to ensure that we start off in a positive way with the direction, I'll be reviewing the Superintendent Goals for the 2024-2025 school year. Some things to note, there are five main goals with accompanying subgoals for the 2024-2025 school year. Please note that Goals one through four were established in the Mount Lebanon School District's Strategic Plan in 2019 through 2025, so meaning this is the last year for these goals, and next year we'll have new ones that will be established during our strategic planning process this year. The Executive Council Team Goals align to the Superintendent Goals based on their role within the district, and updates will be provided throughout the year on the progress towards achieving these goals during the Superintendent Update. So we're going to start with Goal Number One. And in Goal Number One, you will see that it states that student mastery of expanding and increasingly complex standards in reading and language arts, mathematics and sciences, world languages, social sciences, physical and mental health, and practical and fine arts is essential to maintain the district's standard of excellence. Related is the need to provide a balance of experiences in academic athletics and the arts. Underneath here, you will note that there are several subgoals. There's actually two slides worth of subgoals. The first is adopt an elementary ELA and science curriculum. The second is to conduct a special education program review and implement improvements in process, procedures, services, and supports in preparation for the PDE-required special education plan due in May of 2025. Review current practice of elementary-level multi-tiered system of support. Make recommendations for alignment across all elementary schools. Implement consistent practices, procedures, resources, benchmarks, and progress monitoring. Conduct an elementary program review and plan for implementation of improvements in program procedures and services. And then here on this next slide, also related to Goal One, set academic building level goals using disaggregated data by September of 2024. Develop a professional development plan for all employees with the assistance of the Professional Development Committee and implement in the 2024-2025 school year. Implement a K-12 Curriculum Council model that meets quarterly to consider modifications to curriculum, instruction, assessment, and/or resources. Implement an updated curriculum review process and review cycle with assistance from the Curriculum Council. All of these subgoals, if a date is not noted for them for completion, would be completion by June of 2025. The next goal is Goal Number Two. There is a complementary set of skills to the standards that separate students who are prepared for increasingly complex life and work environments in the 21st century from those who are not. An education that develops the skills of analysis, critical thinking, problem-solving, creativity, communication, global awareness, and collaboration is essential to prepare students for the future. Under here, you will see that there are three subgoals. First, provide professional development on the impact of artificial intelligence on teaching and learning. The second is to review and propose policy updates on AI use in the classroom. And then the final one, explore opportunities to expand the high school's credentialing around responsible AI in learning, also known as RAIL. The next goal that we will focus on this year is mastery of standards and a complementary set of skills are best achieved in a thriving and compassionate community of students and adults whose performance and well-being are fostered by an intentional focus on evidence-based social and emotional learning. Underneath this goal, the subgoals are to conduct a student services program review and implement improvement in process, procedures, services, and supports; to evaluate and make improvements to the bullying, harassment policy, and administrative regulations; to evaluate, make recommendations, and implement improvements to services that positively impact the academic, social, and emotional needs of our students as measured by the school climate survey. The next goal that we will consider is Goal Number Four. For students to learn and demonstrate their knowledge, skills, and abilities, the district must foster a safe, welcoming, and inclusive environment in each of its schools. Under here, there are multiple subgoals, the first being to implement improvements for the continued progress of Libo United Committee work and provide quarterly updates to the community. Update current safety procedures, communications, protocols, and expectations, and implement updated strategies based on local, state, and federal guidelines regarding school safety. Implement and host three safety partnership meetings per year. The first two will involve planning and training with the school district and Mount Lebanon Police, Fire Department, and MERCSA. The third will consist of a community forum. Analyze, make recommendations, and implement improvements to the district's student cellphone policies and procedures, and then attend and track five to 10 district events each month focused on academics, activities, arts, athletics, and community outreach. The final goal, which has a couple of slides, is related to evaluating and implementing district-wide strategic operations. This year, we will develop a strategic planning process to develop a strategic plan for the 2026 through 2031 timeframe that includes community involvement and feedback. We will continue to follow and improve our multi-year plan to improve district financial operations, deliver transparent and monthly accurate financial reports, and rebuild the fund balance. Regular public updates to the Board and community on district initiatives. Successfully onboarding the Director of Operations position, who will continue to review and update job descriptions to reflect current needs of the district. Conduct annual FTE reviews to account for how staff are utilized in the district. Develop a process for recruiting and retaining a more diverse workforce, and migrating the district's financial software package to a web-based system. In addition to those, there are a few more subgoals, first being communicating professionally, positively, and transparently with key stakeholders, including community members, families, faculty, staff, and Board of Directors, clearly articulating district goals, priorities, initiatives, and programs. Reviewing, updating, and revising the district website, and implementing a board section on district newsletters. We will review current parent and community committees, make recommendations, and implement improvements to ensure they are focused on providing information, soliciting feedback, and empowering members to communicate information learned at the meetings. We will follow the timeline and process created for updating policies using the PSBA framework and create administrative regulations to align with the updated policies. And finally, we'll review and make necessary improvements to the five-year capital fund plan for facilities and technology. This provides a general overview of our goals that will be posted to the website for public view. This presentation will also be listed in Board Docs for view by the public. I open it up for questions before I finish out the last two slides.
Any questions or comments from the Board?
Just a few items to focus on this year, and I think where, as we noted in the opening slide, the first four goals are really aligned with the current and expiring strategic plan. So we're excited to finish that work out well and to work with everyone in the community, I think, to update that so that it meets current needs.
Yes, very much so, and we're excited about the work. It allows us to continue the good work that we started last year and just go a little bit deeper into areas that we believe are necessary to improve for our district and for our students.
I'm pleased to see such specific goals, too, and so many subgoals under each category because it really articulates what we're, what we as a district are aiming for and how to get there. So I appreciate the clarity on the goals.
So I have two final slides. The first one is convocation. Last Wednesday, we welcomed back all of our staff for convocation. It was led primarily by students. You can see that we had student speakers, student performers. We had a special guest, Mark Cuban, who zoomed in to say congratulations to our staff as we start another school year. I just want to say how enjoyable it was to be together in one room to kick off another great school year here within the district. And then the last thing is kind of what Mrs. Fleischer said, tomorrow starts school. So we will very excitedly welcome back students tomorrow in grades one through 12. I'm excited about it. I'll be walking to Markham Elementary School tomorrow. This year, I might actually take the advice that was given to me that you should wear comfortable shoes if you're walking in Mount Lebanon. I don't know, maybe not tomorrow, but one of those days I'll, I'll wear some sneakers. And then our first day of kindergarten with our students on Thursday, August 22nd. So please, to the community, be really careful as you're driving around. Our students are out and on the streets, coming back and being welcomed into our schools, and we want to make sure that they get here safely. And we're very, very thankful for our crossing guards and Mount Lebanon Police that provide excellent service to us as a school district. We can't thank them enough for helping us to get ready for this new school year. And that's all I have for my Superintendent Report.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Board Member Reports. Policy Committee, Ms. Guth.
Or do you want to defer?
Sure. The Policy Committee met last week and discussed, so we're in the process of transitioning to PSB's Policy Services, and we discussed the discrimination, harassment affecting students policy, discrimination, harassment affecting staff policy, and then bullying and cyberbullying. And those are kind of transitioning out and rescinding policies, JICD, which is anti-bullying, and then the other named policies. So we'll discuss that later. That is all.
The next item is PSBA and Board Development. Ms. Gelman could not be here today because of college drop-off, but did submit a report, so I'll read that for her. Adoption of PSBA policies, as was mentioned last week and tonight, we are currently in the process of adopting the PSBA policy framework. This framework is designed to align our district with state requirements and best practices, aiming to enhance consistency throughout the district while addressing the unique needs of our community. Ms. Gelman will be participating in a four-part PSBA webinar series this fall focused on using data to drive policy and improve outcomes within the district. All Board members are welcome and encouraged to participate in this learning opportunity. I believe information about that is in our PSBA emails as well as our Board updates. With growing concerns over classroom distractions, the Pennsylvania Legislature is increasingly focusing on cellphone use in schools, aligning with a trend where more states and districts are implementing stricter policies or outright bans. According to a Pew Research study, 72% of high school teachers say cellphones are a major distraction in the classroom and are linked to mental health issues that impact both social and academic achievement. This year, we're prioritizing the review of our school district's current progressive policy and its enforcement, which is an important first step. This proactive approach will help us prepare for likely legislative changes in Pennsylvania and ensure that our policy effectively addresses current challenges. By doing so, we can promote stronger academic performance and foster a healthier, more supportive learning environment for all students. Earlier this month, the Team of Ten, the nine Board members and Dr. Fries participated in the PSBA's Board Self-Assessment and reviewed the results with a member of the PSBA staff, which also included resources for further board learning based on areas of need identified in the assessment. So we look forward to digging into that content as well. And that includes Ms. Gelman's report. MLFE, Mrs. Genzel?
Hi. The MLFE is planning to meet for the first time this year in two weeks, on September the 4th, so I'll have more of an update next month. And then the only other thing, which I know I always remind everybody, but this fall, we'll be continuing to sell all of our, our special merchandise, especially the fall blankets, not fall blankets, but blankets, and, and sweatshirts and t-shirts. So again, if anybody's listening, you know, head on over to the website and, and order some things to keep you warm this fall. And that's it. Yeah.
That's all. Thank you. Municipal Liaison, Mrs. Crable?
Sure. Now that we are finishing up our first meetings of the month, we can actually start meeting next month, so we will have more to report, I'm quite sure, in September.
Okay. Parkway West Career and Technical Center, Ms. Johnson wasn't able to send a report. Ms. Crable, I don't know if they've met yet.
I don't believe so.
Okay. We'll hear more from them next month. Pathfinder School, Mrs. Burdick?
We meet later this week, but at that time, we'll be introduced to the new principal there, so I can announce that there's a new principal at Pathfinder named Mrs. Renee Kazusko.
Shazda hasn't met, so there was no report. Community Engagement, Mr. Hoffman?
The Civic Engagement Board will meet next on the 4th of September, which is the first Wednesday of the month. Public participation is encouraged. It's available both via Zoom and at the municipal building.
And Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Crable?
And we meet this week, so I will be there on Thursday. So I'll have more to report next month.
Sounds like tune in next month for a lot more information. And as I mentioned earlier, Agenda Item D in this section, the presentation of the Superintendent District Goals was baked into Dr. Fries's Superintendent Report. The next item on the agenda is comments from residents and taxpayers concerning items for this meeting who have previously requested to speak, which there were none. So we'll move right on to comments from residents and taxpayers for action items for this meeting. Just as a reminder, this comment section is open to residents and taxpayers regarding specifically action items that are coming up on the voting agenda. There'll be a public comment period for other items at the conclusion of the meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on action items? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak, Mr. Single? No? Okay. Moving on to action items, new business for Board consideration and action. All of these items, except where noted with an asterisk, were discussed at the Board Discussion Meeting on the 12th. Just as a reminder to the community as well as the Board, the way that we are doing this now is one resolution to adopt the suite of items within each agenda category, so we're trying something new. The first section is on policy. This includes previously discussed policies, 103, discrimination and harassment affecting students, 104, discrimination and harassment affecting staff, and 249, bullying and cyberbullying. Mrs. Burdick, can you read the resolution?
I move that it be resolved that the Board adopts Policy 103, discrimination harassment affecting students, Policy 104, discrimination harassment affecting staff, Policy 249, bullying, cyberbullying, in substantially the form presented, and rescinds Policy JICD, anti-bullying.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments from the Board before we?
I do have questions, I guess, comments as well. As we move from our, our established Mount Lebanon policies to these PSBA policies, in that process, there's changes in language. And I understand that at the PSBA level, the state-level framework has struck the repetitive nature of bullying from the definition of bullying, that it is not, it is now defined as a single act or a series of acts that are severe, persistent, and pervasive, directed from student to student within the school environment and any number of other school-related environments. We can read it, but we all at this table want a, want a strong bullying policy, and we want, we want it to be clear, and I want for families to be able to, on a difficult evening where they're talking over something with their kid, think, gosh, is that bullying? I don't know, let me look at Mount Lebanon's policy. And I think that what is missing in this new language and this new definition is truly what makes bullying different from an act of unkindness or malicious, malicious humor or malice. I mean, I think that when I look up how bullying is defined in other areas, like the CDC and bullying.gov, there are specific verbal, social, and physical examples given. Now, they're not complete, or it's not an exhaustive list, but includes things like a power imbalance, an aggressive act, maliciousness, behaviors such as making threats or spreading rumors, physical attacks, or intentional exclusion of someone. So if I was talking over something with my kid at home and I wanted to know, gosh, does Mount Lebanon view that particular situation as bullying? I would look at the policy, and I wouldn't find specifics.
Everything you just mentioned is in the policy. It says, "This may include a wide variety of behaviors with a deliberate intent to hurt, embarrass, or humiliate the other person," including such as making threats, spreading rumors, attacking someone physically or verbally, and excluding someone from a group on purpose.
Is that in the top under legal?
That is in the bullying as defined in this policy.
Bullying means intentional electronic, written, verbal, or physical act.
So just for the community's sake, so the, the school code has a definition of bullying that where all school districts across Pennsylvania are required to include in their policy. So the first definition of bullying that is included in this policy, which talks about intentional electronic, written, verbal, or, or physical act or series of acts directed at a student or students, occurring in or out, and/or outside a school setting that is severe or persistent or pervasive, and has the effect of doing any of the following, substantially interfering with education, creating a threatening environment, or substantially disrupting the orderly operation of the school, comes directly from the required language in school code. Districts are permitted to go on to fully, to more locally-defined bullying as long as the required language from school code that we lead with is included in the policy. So our district has gone on to adopt mainly from, I think, bullying.gov, the additional definitions of both bullying and cyberbullying that are also included in the definition of bullying in this policy.
So to find that one, we'd need to click on?
No, you just need to go to page, go to the next page of the policy.
It's listed under definite.
It's listed under definitions in bullying. It gives like a general definition of bullying, and then it breaks it down further into more specific incidents that would be consistent with bullying or cyberbullying. Page three.
I see it.
I think, yeah, there are some formatting issues, but.
There are some formatting issues.
It's right on the next page.
Yeah, once it goes into board docs, it looks completely different.
And for the community and the board, what's nice about this PSBA format is it does make it longer, but it includes all of the legal, state, and federal citations that are related to the policy, as well as links to other related policies within the policy manual, which, as we work through the year to make this transition, some of them will have been adopted, some of them not yet. We're working to get there by, I think, next October. So we'll have some language so people know where to go to look for those citations. But yeah, I totally agree, Mrs. Burdick, that some of the actions that the board took when we last reviewed this policy were in order to adopt a local definition that went on to be more clear and specific about what might be considered bullying in Mount Lebanon, which was taken from bullying.gov. The main change that you noted was there was a line about a pattern of repeated behavior, which was from bullying.gov, but which went contradictory to the state's definition of bullying, which we're required to include, that it could be a single act or a series of acts, as long as it meets those other criteria of severity, persistence, pervasiveness, and its impact on the school setting.
Mrs. Fleischer?
Yes.
And I don't want to interrupt Mrs. Burdick if you're not done talking there. But so can you talk a little bit about the new administrative regulations that we're going to have? Because I also had concerns about that being taken out. Only in practice, thinking about, you know, each individual incident, that we'll need to define what severe means, and what all of those, you know, specifics sort of mean, whenever this comes up. I think, I think it's, you know, it might make it hard. We need to make it easier on administrative, the administration to follow through and report these things. And, you know, I just think it needs to be clear. So we are going to have new administrative regulations that we've never had before, but I'll let you talk a little bit more about that.
Sure. So part of the PSBA Policy Services is the provision of sample administrative regulations. So this would be a procedure or a process rather than the policy level. So those can help provide things like a sample reporting form that we can use that would capture all of the information consistently needed by the administration or staff to follow up on a complaint. It could include, you know, sample definitions or specific regulations, things like our student handbook, which have very specific laid-out guides of if you do this, this will be the consequence on the first, second, third offense. That's an administrative regulation that basically serves to implement a board policy.
And those will be made super clear to, obviously, the administration, but the community as well, I would hope, because, you know, when any incident like this comes up, you know, we had talked about it. It's even different sometimes based on the person receiving it, right? Whether it's interpreted as bullying or not, so.
Yeah. One of the goals for us this school year is directly related to this policy, where it says that we were going to evaluate the policy and then implement new administrative regulations that support a consistent process across the school district. So that is one of the pieces that we'll take into consideration. And I think, you know, Mr. Peterson, you can speak to this, but severe, persistent, and pervasive is a legal term that has pretty defined guidelines as to what that looks like when we're evaluating that. Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I think the PSBA policy and regulations try to draw a balance between recognizing that no list of examples will ever be complete. And so we have to be careful not to be limited to a list of examples, and then find ourselves in a situation where something quite serious happened, and the district's not in a position to impose discipline. So, yeah, I think that the more detailed, the better. But, you know, the severe, there's still some level of discretion. And as long as a decision is not arbitrary, and if it's supported, you know, by the facts, then, you know, the conclusion could be properly drawn that it met the definition of bullying. But certainly, certainly the more detailed regulations, I think, I think what we're hearing is, is that the more perhaps examples and parameters that are laid out to inform members of the district community, you know, the more likely it is that people will have a clear understanding of the policy.
I think it would be extremely beneficial. I mean, I'd almost like to hear from some principals, or, you know, the people who are having to deal with this on a daily basis. You know, whenever you say it's at somebody's discretion, that even leaves room for someone saying, well, this principal handles it this way, or this principal didn't think it was that big of a deal. So, you know, I do understand that there's maybe no perfect, I've been thinking a lot about this, like a perfect solution, you know, to handle this. But I just feel like it's mainly going to benefit the community, but certainly the principals in making these decisions, and allow for less questioning from parents. I.
Great. I think what I'd like to see as an outcome of changing the language is that it's more clear for parents to know what's reportable, more clear for teachers to know how to handle certain situations in the classroom, more clear for administrators to have a way to hear from the teachers about what's happened, more consistent follow-up and unity across the district in terms of if it happens here, it's going to be handled the same way as if it happens here. So clarity and definitions are part of what I'm hearing you say would be the administrative. And that makes sense. That's not our job to determine. That's the administration's job to determine. But it's only as good, this policy is only as good as that link. So I just, I wanted to reassure the community, and I guess reassure us here at the table, that that was, that was part of the plan.
Yeah. Again, we're going to adapt the sample administrative regulations to meet local conditions and concerns. But there is, you know, a report form that will be standardized for all incidents and available at all buildings. And it will lay out definitions as well as a process, a consistent process for how these complaints are investigated across the buildings, how determinations are made, and then what the actions are that will be consistent with the code of conduct. So I think it will only serve to help make sure that complaints, investigations, and consequences are handled sort of consistently across all 10 buildings, which I think helps, we said helps principals and helps the community. I think it also helps kids, which is the most important part, I think, of the policy.
Mrs. Fleischer, that's what I was just going to say, that one other thing is, you know, I shared this story, I think, with one of you, but I had asked just one of my daughter's friends and my daughter in the car the other day, you know, what their definition of bullying was. And completely unsolicited, I had not said anything else to them. And the one girl who's a rising sixth grader said, you know, mentioned the repetitive behavior. So we probably also should keep in mind that when we're teaching our kids in the schools, they have been taught that bullying is, you know, a repeated pattern. Like, that was immediately something she went to. And so it just made me think, in addition to all of this, you know, we need to make sure that all the faculty and everybody talking about this knows that, I don't want to say our definition has changed, but it sounds like it sort of has, right? So.
I think it's.
Not exclusive of it. Sorry, go ahead.
Let me say, I think it's evolving to be more aligned with the state. Yeah.
Yeah. And I do just want to point out, the PDE, the Pennsylvania Department of Education, that definition did not change. That's the same definition that was on the policy last year. This just is in line, more consistent with that existing definition. So it's not a new definition. It's refining it based on the state code definition.
Right, 100%. And my point is, because we are refining it, we need to make sure our children understand that perhaps what they thought of as, you know, the definition is no longer. So, or is evolving. You all know what I'm saying, right?
Yeah. I think that along with that, there was, within the model policy, the option to either say, we may have an educational program, or we shall. And I think we all were in agreement that we shall. And part of it is so that we're reviewing the policy, we're reviewing the administrative regulations, we're reviewing the definitions, we're reviewing how to report all of this with students in an age-appropriate way each year, so that they have the information they need also to either advocate for themselves or to talk to their parents about it.
It's probably also important to note the overlap between a certain incident that gets reported as bullying may also be harassment under Title IX. And those investigations can be conducted concurrently and jointly to address those issues. And so I think we've strengthened, and with the help of the PSBA, it's strengthened our protections around, in particular, Title IX type of claims that could be bullying, but they could be harassment. They're both, and they'll be dealt with as such.
Agreed. Anything else? I think we still need a roll call on this, Mrs. Walter. Thank you all for the discussion. This is, it's an important one to get right, so. Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to Agenda Item Six, the Finance folder includes items related to treasurer's reports, monthly lists of bills, a list of tax refunds for June 2024 and for July 2024, a list of unusual, unusual equipment, unusable equipment.
There is some unusual.
It is unusual, but legally, it's the unusable equipment. The ratification of the June 30th, 2024 list of bills, the list of district bank accounts, the list of budgetary transfers for July 2024, and then noted with an asterisk, because it was not on last week's agenda, is the projected year-end expenditures and revenue for 2023, 2024. So we'll read the resolution, I think, and then have discussion. Mr. Wyland, would you read the resolution, please?
Happy to. I move that it be resolved that the board approves the finance agenda items.
Second. Okay. So I'm going to open the, before we open the floor for discussion, I guess, for the 2023-24 projected expenditures and revenue as of July 31st, 2024, I did want to turn it over, since this is a new item, to Dr. Fries for some additional information.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Conley, who's going to give an overview of where we are so far with the end of 2324.
The document that's enclosed with the agenda is the, the document that's enclosed with the agenda is the document that we've been looking at every month. It includes the 22, 23 actual expenditures, 23, 24 adopted budget, and our year-to-date expenditures as of June 30th, 2024. We also have a column for the revised, projected, final as of May 8th. That is what the board reviewed with my interim predecessor at the time the 24-25 budget was approved. And then the next column is what the revised projected final is. As you can see, when you look at that fourth column, on May 8th, we were projecting a $1.17 million deficit in 2324. And with the updated expenditures and revenue that have been recorded as of July 31st, 2024, that deficit has increased to $1.6 million for a variance of $466,000. Some of the things that we have been analyzing is, just because the school year ended June 30th, we are still processing many, many invoices and transactions that are occurring on the general ledger. Some of those, some of those transactions include invoices from some of our contracted agencies that were larger than what was expected. And there's also some lower revenues than what was projected. And I want to remind the board that during the budget process, it was brought to your attention that the 23, 24 salary and benefits were under projected by $1.2 million. So that also contributes to this large deficit. Prior to that being brought to the forefront to the board, the budget was expected to be $2.7 million. Since then, Dr. Fries and the administration has curbed all spending in 2324. But there are required and necessary expenses that we have to pay. The auditors are starting this week. I hope to have an August 31st projection for you that will give you a number that we should expect to land at. I do expect it to be higher than $1.6 million. I don't want to say what that number is. We are analyzing all invoices, but we've checked in with every single department. All the 23, 24 expenses are within the business office, and we're looking at the approvals for some of these larger expenses, and we're trying to get them down. The auditors are starting on Thursday and Friday, which means they are coming to visit. They will start their audit work. And they will be in our office in person for a week in September. They will give you the final audit report sometime in October or November. But I am expecting it to be higher than $1.6 million deficit for the 2324 school year, or fiscal year. Do you have any questions?
I just want to clarify, because I'm looking at sort of the numbers we looked at, as you mentioned, in May for projections versus the budget, and then those where we ended up. And it actually looks like for salary and benefits, we ended up under budget on those items. So that was not, it looks like the driver of the increase in deficit from the numbers I'm seeing here come from underbudgeting, overbudgeting of revenue rather than underbudgeting of expenses. I mean, there were certainly expenses like tuition and transportation that were $771,200, $259,000 over budget, which we knew and expected. But it looks to me more based on what we're seeing here, that the deficit is being driven by being $905,618 below our May projections for. by being $905,618 below our May projections for real estate taxes largely.
Yes, Mrs. Fleischer, the, that last column is the variance between May 8th and July 31st, and the real estate tax revenue is down $905,000 based on what you just said. And a lot of that has contributed to real estate tax refunds that occurred in the last quarter of 2324.
Which are substantial.
Yes.
And not planned for. In terms of the personnel and service, the salaries, we were able, we went a long period of time without a business director, we went a half year without an assistant superintendent. As positions were becoming open in teaching and other areas, we were not replacing them to try to get closer to the number that we originally planned for. And I'd say the other things that, you know, were an issue for us previous year, that we didn't know were an issue for us until this January of 2024, related to purchase services. So we had a contractor that we used for paraprofessionals that was not funded, but we had to have people because we had to support the students, which puts us in a really complicated situation because you have to have it. For instance, ESY was something that wasn't budgeted fully for, but we have to offer ESY services in the extended school year for our students, and we have to transport them. And in the 2324 budget adoption, those things were not accounted for. It is, to me, disappointing that we didn't get lower in terms of the amount that we are over for this year, but we are $1 million less than what we projected we would be in January of 2024. We thought we were going to be about 2.75 over, and because we took the steps that we did, we weren't at 2.75, we're closer to this 1.6, hopefully, maybe a little bit over that for this school year. If we had not found out when we did, we would have been over by three, four million dollars this school year, if we hadn't stopped the situation when we found out about it.
Dr. Fries, Mrs. Fleischer, just to emphasize a couple of points, forgive the repetitious nature of my first couple of comments. I mean, certainly, we knew about the budgeted versus original projected personnel expenditures, and commend Dr. Fries and her team for making the adjustments that she just highlighted to bring us to a number of actual final expenditures for personnel that's much closer to what was actually budgeted. So the delta there is, you know, much smaller than it could have been had they not taken the steps that they took along the way to rein that in, as certainly, that's the leader for expenditures in any annual budget here in the district. The biggest delta between the most recent projected final and the current projected final is that real estate number. It's almost a million dollars in that real estate number. I just want to highlight that as far as the difference between what we talked about three months ago and what we're talking about now, it's really that million dollars in tax refunds. And certainly, that's an issue that we're all aware of, and an issue that we're encouraging our leaders in state government to get a handle on, because this is going to continue to be the challenge for all school districts moving forward, and how to wrestle with those types of annual variances. Again, highlighting that as of when the auditors returned their report in December, and I forget when it was actually reported to us, in December, January, that we were looking at almost a $3 million shortfall. And, you know, even though we had hoped that it would be 1.1, and it looks like it's now 1.6, largely again because of those real estate numbers, what's the plan moving forward, Doc, to help, you know, continue the efforts to right the ship financially for the district and deal with this additional layer of negative revenue?
Yeah, I mean, and I don't see it improving in terms of a revenue standpoint, right? Because if you look at our revenue sources, about 75% of it is generated from local revenue sources. The main, the main source is revenue in real estate tax, which accounts for 63% of our budget. State revenues are 24%, and our federal revenue sources are about 1%. So in terms of our state resources, we are not a school district that receives anything extra. So if you read something that says that Mount Lebanon received extra funds, that's not accurate. We have, we're battling both state financing as well as our local real estate taxes, and with the common level ratio, it is significantly going to impact us. And I know that that necessarily hasn't been something that we've talked about before in the past, but this past year showed us exactly what real estate taxes can do to us. The common level ratio, we went from, in 2019, 2020, we paid out about almost $16,000 in tax refunds, and last school year, we paid about $1.23 million out in tax refunds. And more than 75% of that was commercial property. So if you have a commercial property that's worth a million dollars, it's now going to be worth this coming year, $520,000. So you can imagine taking half of what you would typically get almost from your tax base is really, really challenging. It's a challenge for all school districts. It's something that we have to continue to think about. And we know also from our budget forum from a few months ago, we talked about how revenue for us is an impact. It's going to continue to be an impact. I don't see it improving in any way anytime soon for our school district. And so we have to be able to be nimble and to look at every expenditure, which is what we have been doing for the last year to get us to this point of not being in the negative as much as we thought we would be. And again, if we hadn't found out about this in, you know, halfway through the school year, it would have been a much different outcome for us come this time, this year.
Thank you. And I guess that last part of your answer was really what I was angling. I mean, obviously, we have limited control over, you know, common level ratio and taxing structures here locally, but being that that's the environment that we live in currently, you know, what's the plan operationally, you know, to balance the books, you know, with that dynamic in place?
Yeah, it's constant viewing of what we're doing and making sure that we are not purchasing things that we don't need. We analyze every item that comes through to us for approval. We have an approval process, a process that we didn't have in place prior to last school year that analyzes each item that comes in. It goes through a three- to four-step process to get reviewed to see if it's in a budget line to be paid and if it was planned for. It's uncomfortable for some people because this is not what our usual practice had been, but it is something that people are becoming more accustomed to, because we don't have a choice to just spend what we feel like we need to spend, but rather, we need to spend what we have planned to spend.
Well, thank you for your diligence in that regard, and thank you to all of the teachers and staff in the district for their diligence in this regard, because I know that it was an all-hands-on-deck approach that got us to the stable footing that we're on now, but it's that same all-hands-on-deck, you know, self-assessment, you know, do I really need this thing? You know, how can we do this most efficiently that's going to carry us through this and allow us to continue to be successful fiscally?
Mr. Peterson, I know we're still in the first quarter of this year, but there seem to be not a lot of reimbursements the month of July. Is that, is there anything in the pipeline we should be concerned about?
Well, part of it is just the timing of when the Board of Property Assessment, they do cases in blocks, so, and then in addition, as you saw in a few of the prior months, it can only take one real big, multiple-year refund to cause a, you know, very substantial impact. And the thing that's a little bit different this year that many of you may be aware of, but the county has changed the timing of the appeal period so that hopefully municipalities and school districts have some idea a little bit sooner. So, in fact, the appeal period that used to open January 1st started 19 days ago, August 1st. And so the, we don't learn right away how many appeals are being filed. There's not really a good system within the county to get that, but we endeavor to get as much information as we can. But yeah, the fact that there may be a lighter month doesn't change any of the very serious issues that have just been discussed because they are ongoing. And what we're, what we're going to be seeing in certainly the, perhaps the earlier part of this year, is the resolution of all the 2024 appeals. We haven't, you know, begun to see all of those yet.
Carefully watching the Pittsburgh Public Schools, doing great work.
So, Mr. Peterson, I think just to better understand for myself and for the community to understand, this is unstable footing. It feels very unstable and uncomfortable to be returning tax money to corporations and individuals within the community who have, over a period of time, requested their money back. When we pay taxes, we budget it, and we put it right into our schools, our salaries, our kids, our programs. And last year alone, $1.1,242,000 when we closed the books, was money that came in that we couldn't use, that we had to give right back out. And that is hurting our bottom line. We can't have a balanced, functional budget if we're bleeding out in tax refunds. So I'd like to be able to vote no for those things, but I understand something differently that we can't really because they are legally due that money.
Yes.
And so it would be harming, my understanding is that, I mean, I'd love to not say $21,000 goes out this month, because I know budget managers who are trying everything to find a fraction of $21,000 this month. So I'd like to be able to say, no, you cannot have your tax money back. And that doesn't work because we would be, they're, we would be liable for that money.
It's, yes, these are, these are essentially judicially determined numbers. The, the, the court case that started all this in 2021 or 2022 basically found that the county was calculating incorrectly. The actual body that sets these ratios is called the State Tax Equalization Board. And the school district, quite frankly, no one in Allegheny County has any authority over that board. It's completely independent. It took the new data that the court said should be used and started that procession down from 82% down now all the way to 52%. And so legally, if, yes, if a taxpayer gets a decision either at BPAR, the first level, or even appeals further to court, then unless there's a basis for the taxing body to appeal, like some error in the fair market value, something like that, then yeah, it is, it is a legal obligation of the school district.
And it, we've always had to process, collect taxes and process appeals and assessments based on the common level ratio. The new wrinkle is that it's 30% lower than it was a couple of years ago, and it, and, but by the time these appeals come before us, they've pretty much already been determined by the courts. We just have to say yes to make the appeal go through. I mean, I think Dr. Fries said this is facing all school districts. I do just want to make the point, it is only facing school districts currently in Allegheny County, based on practices by people in Allegheny County that were not school district administrators, but we are the ones who are dealing with those errors, and there has not been a stable and rational process for reassessing properties. I think the last time there was a reassessment was before I moved to Pittsburgh, and that was because it was court-ordered. So, you know, we're dealing with the need to really reassess property values at current market value so that we can understand the actual value and then what 52% of that would be.
And I want to add like one other thing just for context, right? So the CLR sets the standard. Until there's a county-wide reassessment or statewide reassessment, these percentages will continue to decrease year after year, and that means that our homeowners are the ones who end up being hit the most, as well as our employees who provide services to students. Sadly, the system is antiquated, right? I mean, nobody wants to pay taxes. However, when it is antiquated and the people that are responsible for fixing it, who really can't fix it, are school districts, it seems to be a little bit unfair, that we're left with these very difficult decisions that impact taxpayers rather than just leadership amongst governance that says, hey, this is what we're going to do, and kind of does a reset. So if that CLR stays in place, in a few years, we'll be at 20% of taxable property value. And just think about that. That's a really harmful way to look at how we protect and support our students in school districts.
And the, the, perhaps one of the most negative components of all this is, normally, if any taxing body has a substantial reduction in the assessed value of all their properties, you make it up through Milich so that it's net neutral. But school districts are the only taxing bodies that are limited to Act One. So a municipality might be able to, if a municipality raised taxes 20%, the amount of tax paid by the taxpayers might stay about the same. But since we're limited to 2%, 3%, sometimes up to 6% under Act One, there's no way for school districts to make up the difference. And because it only affects Allegheny County, that's, that's why, if this were a statewide issue, you'd probably be hearing more about it from Harrisburg.
So being that this is a county-based issue, what's being done with county leadership to advocate for a change beyond, you know, comments at a board meeting?
I spoke at a Senate hearing a month ago, and I met with Representative Miller about two weeks ago and asked for a meeting with the county executive. I mean, I am significantly concerned about not only our reality, but the reality of all school districts to be able to pay bills, because it's going to get to the point where the money that we rely on, 74%, you know, of local revenue is what drives our school district, that it's not going to exist anymore. And I don't think a lot of people know about it. Like, I watched the news last week, and it was encouraging people to file tax appeals. The more people that file tax appeals, the more likely we are to continue to be in a deficit, because we won't be able to pay for things. And that's concerning, very concerning.
I do want to say also, it also is a state issue, because the state is also not appropriately funding public education, which is their, they are constitutionally obligated to do so, which means that we have to rely so heavily on local revenues in the first place. You know, ideally, the state revenue would be a higher percentage of our budget, but agreed that advocacy needs to happen at the county level with county leaders so that they understand, I mean, what position school districts are being put in by their hesitation to act on the issue.
So at what point do more serious decisions need to be made? I have concerns, Mrs. Conley mentioned she expects the end-of-year $1.6 million to be even higher. You know, not knowing what that might be based on previous projections, I have concerns. So, A, what's being done to nail down better projections going forward, and how far in the school year do we need to get before more drastic decisions need to be made?
Well, we have a full year now of good data. We had no data to go off of and no actual We had no data to go off of and no actual compartmentalizing of purchases. It was one big lump of things that we did last school year that we've been parsing through. And we didn't live through a summer. We lived through all the other months, you know, with Peasars and salaries and things like that. But we didn't live through ESY or transportation or any of the things that happened during the summer. And if you guys remember from last year, the budgeting didn't end up in cute little, you know, pockets where it was like, okay, this is what we paid for this, this is what we paid for that, because they were taking from one category to pay another thing. So it looked like one thing, but it was really another thing. Or, you know, we received bills, January and February, that hadn't been paid from the year before, that were $300,000, $400,000 worth of bills that we had to pay for services that we found in a stack of papers when we were cleaning out offices. So now we actually have a plan. We spoke to the Allegheny Intermediate Unit to find out what our actual costs would be, for instance. And we've eliminated some of those categories, like the professional services that we were paying millions of dollars for. And we're in a better place now because we have better data. The data last year was all the best that we could do. And it's sad to say that, but I'm being honest, it was picking up the pieces. We now have things in better places that we know what they were actually being spent on, which will help us with projections moving forward. And again, I mean, we projected we were going to be 2.75 off. There were some really hard decisions that were made last year to get us to that point because we would have been closer to that.
And I think we should still look at this year as a learning year. We use better data from zero-sum practices to build our budget. And we are reporting out how that's going every single month to better understand, okay, was that process, is that process leading us to better information? One of the things that I've talked about a little bit with Ms. Connolly is the difference between more information and good information. So to really think about what the board and community need to know, at what cadence to really understand, because clearly if we're getting a projection every month, but it's not based on accurate data, then it's an inaccurate projection. And then we're making decisions based on that, that may not be the best decision. So changing how and when we see estimated finals versus just actual expenditures. I think all of that, as Mrs. Connolly comes on board with her significant years of experience as Dr. Fries and her team has a better handle and better systems and processes. But I do think this is still going to be a little bit of a learning year for us so that we can arrive at the best process moving forward.
There are issues outside of the control of just this board. I mean, I would love to say to the community, we know where every penny of your tax money is going, but we get bills calling due on tax refunds that we can't, from this position in August, predict what they'll be asking for in November and February and March. And we, so I think it's important, it's just imperative to understand that our commitment is to a balanced budget and our commitment is to rebuilding the fund balance. But at the pace that the government is approving these CLR reductions, the control has slipped out of our hands.
Yes, although in the budgeting process, just to be clear, we did meet with our attorney at Tucker-Ernsberg, who processes these assessment appeals, who has an understanding of the pipeline, who gave us a better number to use to build into the, like, to sort of reduce in advance the number that we could expect from real estate tax revenue. Now, we don't necessarily have control of, as you said, new things that come on board. But we do have, I think, a better handle in the current year budget that we're in on how that might impact us, certainly than not accounting for it at all.
Yes.
Yes. And this is another year as well that we'll be looking at staffing and looking at all of those things earlier as we were not before, which was part of the issue. So I also think that will give us a better projected outcome as well.
Any other questions or comments on the financial items before we move to a roll call? All right, roll call, please. Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye on all of it, with an exception that I, I vote aye on all of it, but I just verbally protest the idea that tax refunds need to be doled out this way.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
Thank you. The next agenda item is the facilities. There's one item under facilities, which is the previously discussed parent transportation agreement. Ms. Guth, can you read the resolution, please?
Absolutely. I move it to be resolved that the board approves the facilities agenda items. A, parent.
Second.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
Roll call, oh, sorry, discussion. Questions or comments on this item? Roll call, please. Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
All right. The next agenda item is human resources. Under this category, we'll be approving the personnel report, the annual list of salaries for teachers, the annual list of salaries for 10-month clerical employees, aides and personal care assistants, the superintendent's evaluation and salary. There are two items here noted with an asterisk, which means that they've been either added or revised since our discussion meeting. So I just wanted to ask Dr. Fries for any additional information on item A, the personnel report, and item B, the approval of the list of annual salaries for teachers.
Personnel report, since last week, we did two voting meetings this month so that we could get people hired, that were hired over the summer as quickly as possible. So the personnel report is shorter than it was last week because there's only been, you know, a small selection of people that have been hired in the last week. I'm going to talk about B, and then I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Connolly, who will kind of give like a quick overview of some of the things that we're doing to hire more individuals for the PCA roles. The B is approval of list of annual salaries for teachers. The salaries for teachers and the salaries for 10-month clerical employees, aides and personal care assistants, all happen in the month of August. So this is a report that we have each year that lists the annual salaries for these individuals.
And those are all contractual?
They're all contractual.
Mrs. Connolly?
We currently have 13 PCA and one CICA position.
We currently have several PCA and a CICA position vacant. One of the things that we discussed at our last meeting is a laser focus on recruitment. Recruitment really has to be a constant and ongoing effort all year. We had seven resignations within a 10-day period. We have to try to find a way to retain these, our employees, and also to try to stay ahead and have people in the pipeline who are interested in taking these positions. In the meantime, since last week, there's been a focus on social media. And our social media campaign has included Facebook and Instagram ads. These ads do cost, have an expenditure aligned with it, but if we can get hits and attraction to our school district, we believe it's worth it. It's very low cost at $50. Many of our schools have various social media accounts, and they share the openings as well. The job openings were also included in the district and staff newsletters that went out. Those are distributed to approximately 7,500 emails. Also, Mrs. Smith is using a trackable link on the district's social posts and newsletter attached, or that summary is given to us for us to analyze. There were a total of 241 engagements, 77 clicks in the last seven days. This is an ongoing problem. We are trying to prioritize and cover the assignments the best we can. We are expanding our Facebook ad outside of the Mount Lebanon area to a 15-mile radius around the district. We are focusing on the fact that our collective bargaining agreement does include benefits, healthcare benefits for new employees. And I think truly keeping an eye on the performance of whether these ads have any effective measures is really important so we can expand upon it. I'll be reaching out to the job board at CCAC. There's really nothing going on in the college level in terms of the university level for these PCA positions. But we will reach out to community college to see if people who are seeking an associate would be interested in coming here.
I think it's also important to note, we talked about this last week, that we were down to five hires as July ended. So Dr. Schuman and Human Resources worked all summer to get candidates in place, to hire people, which we had quite a few people that were hired and were on last week's agenda. And then with those resignations, it really put us back to where we were at the beginning of the summer. At the beginning of last school year, we were at 23 open positions. So this is better than last year, it is not where we want to be. We have a coverage plan for the buildings in the interim until we get the opportunity to hire additional people. I believe we have three interviews this week as well that are scheduled, that will be getting those people onboarded as quickly as possible to bring them into our schools.
Questions or comments on those two new items before we move on?
Mrs. Connolly, I know universities are starting to get back in the swing of things. Have you thought about doing like any of the career things that are going to be coming up here shortly in like October, November? I know like four years, they will have a lot of individuals, especially that are local, that may have that two-year degree or they have enough credits under their belt as well from transferring. Have we thought about like doing some things like that or getting creative in those spaces as well?
We worked with Point Park University and Duquesne. Point Park has actually a paraprofessional-to-teacher program that they're running, and they have both advertised for us for positions. We haven't gotten anybody yet from them, but it doesn't mean that we won't, and we continue to work with them as well.
Great, thanks.
There was mention last week, I believe, Mrs. Connolly, that there would be a compensation analysis done on PCA specifically. I know that agreement was made roughly a year ago. I think that the collective bargaining agreement was done with the PCA group. But it would be, I think, helpful to understand at this point, A, why it is that PCA's in particular are leaving, and B, in terms of the compensation package. Dr. Fries mentioned, I believe it was, about healthcare. I don't know that it, you know, I just don't know, is that something that other districts are offering? Is it not? Is our rate below or on par with other areas? And has any of that work been done yet since last week?
It's not ready for public view yet, we're still working on it. Our focus last week was getting people hired, and then she's been reaching out to get additional information from local. I mean, I would say just candidly, that we aren't paying the amount that other school districts are, but there's other things that we do that are different than other places. But in most cases, people look at the per hourly rate, which is understandable. But again, it's not something we can just do, it has to be collectively bargained. And that decision has to come from both sides as to how that money, when added to a contract, is utilized. It's not solely our discretion to just add to one part of a bargaining agreement, it would have to be a discussion.
Yeah, just to note, we're in year three, I believe, of the contract with that employment group. And I would echo Mr. Hoffman's request, I guess if we're preparing this comparator data to look at salaries and benefits as a comparison, just so we have more information to go on.
You said this is year three?
I believe so, yeah, I'm looking at the contract, it's, we're starting year three of a five year, yeah, it goes through June 30th, 2027. Other questions or comments on the new items before we move on to the resolution? All right. Mrs. Crable, can you read the resolution?
I move that it be resolved that the board approves the Human Resources agenda items.
Second.
Other questions or comments on the whole folder? Roll call, please. Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
All right. The next series of items is the curriculum and instruction. This includes the approval of federal grants for 2024-25, the appointment of an Act 44 Safety and Security Coordinator, agreements with Maxim Healthcare Services, Leaders in Learning, Sunbelt Staffing, and Solient Health, as well as the Keystone Oaks District, School District to participate in Project Succeed, school trips for Mount Lebanon High School, cheerleading, field hockey, and marching band, and a confidential settlement agreement. The Solient Health agreement is noted with an asterisk?
We updated the contract, there was not a contract attached before and there is now.
Any questions on the additional information for that contract? Mr. Hoffman, would you read the agenda item, please?
I move that it be resolved that the board approves the curriculum and instruction agenda items.
Second.
Questions or comments on these items? All right, roll call, please. Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
All right. We are now at the period of the agenda for questions or comments from residents. Presentations or comments are to be limited to three minutes. The public comment period is open to residents and taxpayers regarding matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before the board. All commenters should begin by stating their name. Comments are limited to three minutes, and we will notify commenters when their time has expired. Questions requiring follow-up will be referred to the administration for later response. Comments by public participants are their own and should not be assumed to be statements of the district. The Mount Lebanon School District is committed to providing a safe, inclusive, and welcoming school environment that recognizes and celebrates the diverse identities within our community so everyone feels a sense of belonging. Anyone who wishes to offer comments? Anyone who wishes to offer comment, please approach the podium.
Bruce Slater from 140 Skylar Circle. I noticed you, as you just mentioned about, any reply or anything like that we conducted later. I went a little fast, two, three years, or whatever, I don't get any responses in the school board meeting at all, zero. And, you know, it's nothing, you know, it's silence, you know, when it comes to that. It's about like Joe Biden, sitting around doing, you know, and not responding to anything for our new heirs. You know, for a month, she has not answered any questions at all. It's like, what's going on here? Silence on responding to people from the public. And this is a time to expose, or respond, or correct any errors in it. And it's also, the school district should also get into teaching the kids how to think for themselves. How do they think for themselves is through classes in geometry, statistical probabilities, comments, well, that'll come later, in respect to all others, I mean, respect. And you don't need bullying, you know, if you have respect. And developing analytical skills by collecting information and coming to conclusions yourself. And that's how you solve and resolve problems. And it develops, in the end, common sense. Where I grew up, I grew up on a farm, in a rural area. I think the school in my upbringing developed a lot more common sense than anything I've seen around here, in the city of Pittsburgh. Anyway, and talking about budget items, you're talking about how to retain all, more tax money and everything, but there was no discussion about what can we do without, or trim. About two, three months ago, there was a lot of kids going to this school, going to that school, going to this school. Why can't it be done like it was done in the past, internally? Wouldn't have that transportation cost? Because transportation doesn't create any education. You know, to the destination it does, but it could be done here, and save that money.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to offer comment? Please state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Annette Novak, and I am the president of the Education Support Professionals, which includes the P C As that we were discussing earlier. One-third of that staff has turned over in the last two years, were hired new and also left. So wages, that's one thing, they have benefits, that's not the problem. There's something else at play, so you have to drill down. You can't just say, well, if we had the money, we would pay them more. And although it is a contractual agreement, any contract is two parties coming together in an agreement and putting it on paper. At any time, if the district had the funds, or were so inclined to do so, and wanted to pay P C As more, I can be here in 10 minutes, any time of day or night, to discuss that with you. It's not a problem, it's a contract for five years. If there's something happens within that five years, that drastically changes something, we might need to reopen that contract. We're not going to reargue the whole thing, no one likes negotiating for 11 months, I can attest. But you can direct it to that. Several school districts have done that and had success. I don't think it's feasible for this district at this point in time, unfortunately. However, you have to figure out why they're leaving. People, five people left, and yet came back, and they're going to be day-to-day sub-P C As. So that tells you, it's not that they don't enjoy the work, they are very committed to these kids. They can't continue to work in such a short-staffed arena, day after day. You are literally killing these people, emotionally, mentally, and physically, to go home at the end of every day and say, I don't feel like I did any part of my job well, because I couldn't give this kid my full attention, I couldn't offer the supports that this child needed, et cetera. That's what a P C A does. You live to care and support these children. And when you can't do that, you are an abject failure in your own eyes, because you didn't give them what they needed. But you can't, because you're being pulled in so many different directions. Could any of you sustain doubling your workload, day after day after day, for three or four years straight? Could you do that? I think not, but that's what you're asking them to do. I am open to any discussion anyone would like to have with me, Dr. Fries has all of my contact information. Let's get together and figure something out, because just talking about it, we need some action plans, and we need them very quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to offer comment? Would anyone online like to offer comment? All right. I want to announce upcoming public meetings. The Policy Committee will meet on Monday, September 9th, 2024, at 6:00 PM, in Room D 205 of the Mount Lebanon High School, and via Zoom. The Board Discussion Meeting will take place on Monday, September 9th, at 7:30 PM, in D 205 of the Mount Lebanon High School, and via Zoom. And the Board's regular meeting will take place on Monday, September 16th, at 7:30 PM, in Room D 205 of the Mount Lebanon High School, and also via Zoom. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sooner.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.